Good evening. This November 20th, 2017, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Thomas Jefferson High School Saxophone Quintet arranged by student Dani Matar and under the direction of Adam Foreman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
That was wonderful. We have so many opportunities to hear the National Anthem in so many different ways. That was unusually lovely. In order to comply with Section 2.2-37112D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on November 20th, 2017, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Corbett Sanders, seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor? Motion is unanimous. Thank you very much. A few announcements before we begin. First Supervisor John Cook is here this evening to be with us. Thank you very much, Mr. Cook. Also, Mr. Wilson will not be here this evening. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to the School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under Upcoming School Board Meetings. The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select School Board from the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meeting website. And please turn off or silence your cellphone. I would like to call on Ms. McLaughlin for the National Inclusive Schools Week.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. And again, I want to extend my appreciation to our Braddock Supervisor John Cook for joining us here for this very important resolution that I'm about to read. Very timely considering what the Board will be voting on later this evening in its One Fairfax policy. For National Inclusive Schools Week, December 4th through 8th, 2017. Whereas, since its inception in 2001, National Inclusive Schools Week has celebrated the progress that schools have made in providing a supportive and quality education to an increasingly diverse student population, including students who are marginalized due to disability, gender, socioeconomic status, cultural heritage, language preference, and other factors. And whereas, Inclusive Schools Week is an annual event sponsored by the Inclusive Schools Network and is held during the first full week of December. And whereas, this year's theme is Stand Up, Sit Tall for Inclusion, because inclusive practices enable us to model for the world that our strengths come from our diversity. And whereas, with these examples available to all, we can learn more ways to stand up, sit tall for inclusion, because inclusion results in improved outcomes for all students. And whereas, the week also provides an important opportunity for educators, students, and parents to discuss what else needs to be done in order to ensure that their schools continue to improve their ability to successfully educate all children. Now, therefore, the Fairfax County School Board encourages the entire FCPS community to stand up, sit tall for inclusion. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous. Thank you very much, Ms. McLaughlin.
I just want to say it's an honor to be able to present this on behalf of our School Board. We continue to focus and identify ways in which we can close gaps, but also create an environment where we celebrate the diversity that we are blessed to have here in Fairfax County. And so I can think of nothing better than for our Board, along with the Board of Supervisors, to spotlight something important like this. And it truly does reflect the shared appreciation for this important thing that we pulled away Supervisor Cook from his busy schedule to join us here in celebration of this important resolution.
So we would like to invite Mr. Cook, Diane Cooper-Gould, our Septa President, our new PTA, and all of those who are here this evening to support this resolution to come join us for a picture with the Board. Thank you. School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my great pleasure to read this recognition. And first, I'd like to recognize Principal Cecilia Vanderheij of Belvedere Elementary School has joined us today, so if you'd stand up and let us recognize you. So tonight, we have the honor and the pleasure to recognize Belvedere Elementary School as a 2017-2018 National Title I Distinguished School. This recognition program is sponsored by the National Association of State Title I Directors for the purpose of acknowledging high-performing Title I schools and their outstanding achievements in education. It is not an easy distinction to earn. Only two schools from each state are selected annually as a National Title I Distinguished School. I'm thrilled that Belvedere is one of those two, and I know that it is very well-deserved. To be considered, a school must maintain full state accreditation, have a poverty rate of at least 35% for the two most recent school years, and must demonstrate high academic achievement. I'm pleased to congratulate Principal Cecilia Vanderheij and her staff on this outstanding accomplishment. It is truly a team effort. Through dedication, perseverance, and hard work, the staff helps every student to be successful. Belvedere is Fairfax County's first elementary, and currently only, elementary school to offer the prestigious International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program, which gives all of its students the opportunity to have the IB program experience from kindergarten through 12th grade. The IB curriculum challenges students to become internationally-minded thinkers, enquirers, and problem solvers. The IB Primary Years Program is only one of a variety of challenging opportunities at Belvedere. The faculty and staff work together as a collaborative team to plan and execute high-quality instruction for all students. With encouragement, each student is empowered to build on his or her unique knowledge in a supportive school culture. It's easy to understand why Belvedere Elementary was selected for this distinction. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Vanderheij, as well as any members of her
Next, we get to celebrate and honor the McLean Highlanders Marching Band for their outstanding accomplishment this fall. The McLean Highlanders Marching Band, for the second year in a row, has won the state championship. Their show this year was not "All Heroes Wear Capes," and I've seen it, and it's outstanding. Yay. They won first place in the 2017-2018 U.S. Bands Virginia State Championship in Virginia Beach. In addition to winning first place for the second year in a row, they also won Caption Awards for Best Music, Second Best Visual, and Best General Effect. We would also like to recognize Band Directors Chris Weiss and Deirdre Denson for leading the band to their victory. And I see we have two of the younger members of the family tonight, the Munchkins, are here. On behalf of the School Board, we wish you continued success and congratulate all of your hard work and dedication. Keep up the good work. At this time, I would like to invite McLean's Principal Ellen Riley, the Band Directors Chris Weiss, Deirdre Denson, and members of the McLean Highlanders Marching Band to join us at the dais for a photo with the Board, and congratulations again. Wonderful, wonderful program. Tonight, ten citizens have signed up to address the Board, and we also have two videos. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-waste employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with a decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home. So language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. Our first speaker is Teresa Shipe.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to tonight. My name is Teresa Shipe, and I am a Fairfax County Public School parent. I am here representing the group More Recession for Fairfax County. Our group believes, based on current research and personal experience, that more recess is essential for our elementary school students to thrive and receive a well-rounded education. Tonight, I'm here to say thank you. Thank you for responding to our request to add language regarding recess to Fairfax County's School Board Legislative Program. The proposed amendment states, "The Fairfax County School Board supports providing local school divisions with greater flexibility in determining appropriate allocation of instructional time in elementary schools across specific subject areas." Such flexibility would allow school divisions the opportunity to restructure the educational environment based on current research and to provide adequate time for recess. We believe this amendment is a great first step towards providing Fairfax County elementary school students with our goal of 40 minutes of recess a day, broken into at least two periods. More Recession for Fairfax County has teamed up with parents in other Virginia school districts, and we've created a group called More Recession for Virginians. And together, we're working to get a bill introduced and passed through the legislative branch to achieve Fairfax County's proposed legislative program amendment. We appreciate the work you have done and look forward to continuing to work with you in conjunction with the Legislature to increase recess times for Fairfax County elementary school students and Virginia in general. And I'd like to give the rest of my time to Cecilia.
Thank you, Teresa. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and to represent many parents from Fairfax County that advocate to more recess for our kids. My name is Cecilia Alvarez and an active member of the group More Recession for Fairfax County. And I will take this opportunity to thank you for considering me and Catherine Stewart as candidates to be part of the Student Health Advisory Committee, to work closely with them in all aspects related to health for our students. As Teresa has mentioned, we're working and expanding our efforts to the Virginia residents to better serve our youth community, our students, and to continue to work with you in this important mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Hommer, to be followed by Vince Nettuno.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Deborah Hommer. I am a Fairfax County resident. Thank you for the opportunity to provide feedback on One Fairfax Policy. The American Psychological Association has been found to play an increasingly political, rather than informative, role, has practically zero accountability and zero liability for its failures, and many of its findings cannot be replicated. Insulin shock treatment, electroconvulsive therapy, and lobotomies are all previous APA socially acceptable treatments which are now considered barbaric. In a lobotomy, the surgeon would peel back each eyelid, insert his ice pick, and with a hammer tap through the brain, will go about and sever the frontal lobes. It has been proposed that the transgender push today mirrors the lobotomy push of yesteryear, wherein the press used uncritical and sensational reporting styles, which may have been a factor influencing the quick and widespread adoption of lobotomy as a psychiatric treatment. And this bias occurred despite opposing views in the medical community. The treatment of transgender children is gaining significant momentum despite the significant risks involved. There is a lack of research. The current protocol being used in the U.S. is based on best guesses, not solid evidence. The gender affirmative approach of supporting children in their chosen gender identities is a theory that has not undergone rigorous study. Puberty blockers and cross-sex hormones are being used off-label. The hormone blocker Lupron shows that people are reporting serious long-term debilitating side effects from having used the drug. Dr. Michelle Crotella, a pediatrician, has stated, "The transgender ideology has infiltrated my field and has produced large-scale child abuse." Transgenderism is trendy right now, and 75% to 95% eventually outgrow gender dysphoria. Some astonishing statistics regarding endocrinologists. Only 65% said they felt at least somewhat confident prescribing hormones. 31% said that they had low confidence in their understanding of gender confirmation surgery. 36% stated they were confident in their understanding of transgender legal and social issues, and only 40% had their staff formally trained. Dr. McHugh, who has studied transgenderism and performed sex reassignment surgeries for 40 years at Johns Hopkins, shut down the gender clinic and opposed sex reassignment surgery, explaining that most of the people who had undergone this type of surgery had much the same problems with relationships, work, and emotions as before. The hope that they would emerge now from emotional difficulties to flourish psychologically had not been fulfilled. He has said that the medical treatment for transgender youth is like performing liposuction on an anorexic child. I implore you, please slow down, let's think about this, and do no harm. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vince Nettuno.
The One Fairfax Resolution policy is under consideration, and I wanted to report that Jeb Stuart High School has been exceeding the One Fairfax for many, many years. An example of that, I want to read the excerpt from a current student's letter to Fairfax County School Board. "Stewart is an extremely diverse school where we are a most welcoming, respectful, and tolerant group of students and faculty. Our diverse breeds acceptance and not hate. It also brings challenges in the form of a large, low-income student population that unites us. Stewart's motto is 'We are one.' We do not allow ourselves to be divided by class, race, religion, income, social group. Our differences serve as a community, as an opportunity for us to learn and celebrate. The Jeb Stuart name change has painfully divided our community. Debate was sparked two years ago by a group of students who felt passionately about their cause. However, their personal beliefs did not represent those of the student body, despite their characterizations of themselves as representatives of Jeb Stuart as a school community. They did not speak for us. They claimed, and in fact did not even speak to us about the issue until it grew into a debate during a school day in April of 2016. This was the first time that the vast majority of my peers had even heard about the name change, including myself. This small group of students had been working under the guise of representing our collective opinion for nearly a year. Now we are left with the rubbish of what they have started. To this day, student opinion has been largely disregarded and misrepresented. The students who speak the loudest and speak for change, they actively shut down their peers who even question or simply seek more information about their position. This has been exacerbated by adults on both sides, who have created a toxic and volatile environment precluding any respectful discussion. I want to bring a different view to the table for myself and my peers, who are not too afraid to come forward and do not know how. However, the name change process has painted our school as quite the opposite. Those who seek to change the name justify their actions by perpetuating rhetoric claiming that the name fosters hate within our schools. This is not the case. In fact, the name change debate has sparked more hatred than the name ever did. This process has been deeply flawed, with a public debate in which one side's argument hinges in large part on an inaccurate and hateful representation of our school, while the other is characterized to defend the honor of a Confederate general. And all student voices, beyond the few that speak for the minority of our student body, have been silenced. The bottom line is Stewart is a special place. Our diversity is our greatest strength and also our greatest challenge. We cannot bear the financial or emotional burden of this change, nor is such a change truly warranted, given the cost and the failed process. Additionally, I personally have been, it's been reported to me, that Fairfax County is rolling out teams of counselors into Jeb Stuart High School and are publicly advertising to students specific days where they can come and have mental health sessions at school as a result of this name change. It's my understanding this is specifically only to Jeb Stuart High School, which strongly would suggest that the School Board did not do the basics upfront preparation in recent name change coup d'etat, which ignored student input and didn't give students a chance to pick their own name. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joe Pishoda.
Dr. Brayban and Fairfax County School Board, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. And I want to say right now, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I just don't talk about this at dinnertime. The One Fairfax policy, like the One Fairfax Resolution, is so ambiguous that it also lends itself to abuses toward political favorite groups, plus wasteful spending that the school system doesn't have, such as the renaming of Jeb Stuart High School to Justice High School. I'd like to share the rest of my time with Mrs. Anna Apina, a 25-year resident of Mason District and of the Jeb Stuart Pyramid.
Good evening. I'd like to join the gentleman who spoke before me on the comments about the name change of Jeb Stuart High School. I have lived in the area for 25 years and have supported the school in all their activities. I understand that the students were given the opportunity to vote, and they voted overwhelmingly for not changing the name, and if it was changed, to be changed to Stewart. About 800 students voted in favor of that, against 400 for another name. And those votes were not taken into account. The school is given now the name Justice. The students were not given justice in what they voted. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Peng Wang.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. This is my first time I got a chance to can speak out in front of the School Board. I'd like to share the rest of my time with Mrs. Anna Apina, a 25-year resident of Mason District and of the Jeb Stuart Pyramid.
Good evening. I'd like to join the gentleman who spoke before me on the comments about the name change of Jeb Stuart High School. I have lived in the area for 25 years and have supported the school in all their activities. I understand that the students were given the opportunity to vote, and they voted overwhelmingly for not changing the name, and if it was changed, to be changed to Stewart. About 800 students voted in favor of that, against 400 for another name. And those votes were not taken into account. The school is given now the name Justice. The students were not given justice in what they voted. That's those my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Peng Wang.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. This is my first time I got a chance to can speak out in front of the school board, you know, since my coming to Virginia early 2000. This is my first time. And I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate Mike sharing the speaking lot with me. You know, I have been, you know, in this area, you know, starting working in this area since 2001. And all I wish, you know, I'm trying to make a wish before the new year, I wish to see more opportunities than curbs. And I saw many, many people very hard making opportunities. And unfortunately, those opportunities were followed with curbs, with all type of backgrounds. You know, I deeply share my respect to the people creating opportunities to people with different backgrounds. And I wish there would be less people to make those curves. You know, we came to United States, I came from China, and we came here for better life, more opportunities, fair play. This is our dreamland. And I hope, you know, there will be more tolerance, you know, for people like me. I'm not talking about any other background, like Chinese people, Japanese people, Korean people. You know, we share similar backgrounds, it might be different from local tradition. But the great thing about United States is tolerance. You know, we have variety, and we have people coming from all over the world. And please remember, there are only 5% people coming from Asia. And I, we work hard, so please, don't penalize people working hard. That's my new year wish, you know, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tina Williams.
Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Braybrand. I'm Tina Williams, President of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers, and I am speaking on behalf of my members. We are now facing a new BA proposal and 3% bonus in tuition sharing. I'm here to tell you directly, this falls short of providing respectful response to this issue. We will not be divided, new versus seasoned teachers versus instructional assistants. We must all be valued, respected, and compensated with equity. Our members do support tuition reimbursement for educators wanting to pursue an advanced degree. For those close to retirement or have circumstances that prohibit participation, the option does not support their personal or professional needs, nor does it support the real need for job experience and relevant professional development in the county. A small number of educators are considered overmarked. When I say educators, I am referring to veteran teachers and equally our IAs. Balancing the budget by withholding fair compensation based on a study cheapens the contributions of these professionals. Too often, numbers and data are emphasized, but we forget about people. This is not a message that promotes retention or compassion of employees. Here's a member comment. "I am in my 21st year of teaching grades K to 3. Every year, my class has a large number of special needs students, English language learners, children with challenging behaviors, and it is not because I hold a master's degree. I regularly attend professional development courses, stay current with technology. I have been a team lead, mentor, excellent teammate, and I can unpack any K to 3 standard on the pacing guide. I have taught hundreds of students to read, write, understand numbers, and be great citizens. How does a master's degree make me a more valuable employee in this county? We have also received an outpouring of comments on the calendar. First, the blackout dates. Tied to professional development and early release dates, these are widely perceived as disrespectful, a poor use of school time, negatively impacting employee life balance, and they do not serve the community. The larger issue is the appropriate use of professional development and planning. Because of the encroachment on the educator's time, unencumbered teacher workdays and days at the end of the quarter are a necessity. Second, sufficient notice to change the start date has not been given. Such a significant change warrants employee input due to the impact on families and this community. Also, a six-to-seven week delay in receiving a first paycheck is an unnecessary hardship. FCFT recommends studying the impact on an early release, and the pay problem must be fixed. I stand with members of FCFT and asking for thoughtful discussion that upholds their dedication and professionalism."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Martenson.
Good evening, Board members. I have read the One Fairfax policy several times, and quite frankly, I find a lot of indecipherable language. But the key word prominently enshrined in the One Fairfax policy is equity. Well, one place where equity has clearly not been upheld by this board is in the renaming of Jeb Stuart High School. I served on the Ad Hoc Official Committee, and at our first meeting, we discovered that 16 or so of the members favored changing the name of our school, and only nine favored keeping it. Is that equity? Also, the Ad Hoc Committee was supposed to be comprised of vested stakeholders in the Jeb Stuart High School community, yet at least half of those who supported the changing of the name had no stake in our community. Is that equity? While serving on the committee, I personally met with every one of you at least once, some more than that. What I learned was interesting. For example, Jane Strauss personally told me what she told Tom Davis a year ago, and has been repeated many, many times by her, that she really hoped in the spirit of compromise that the name could be changed to Just Stewart. Ryan McElveen was in that meeting and expressed a similar sentiment. Dahlia Polczek, on the other hand, told me that if one student was offended, something had to be done. Really? One student? Is that the way this board operates? If one of you is offended or opposes some action to the rest of you, the 11 of you cave? Is that equity? Let me state for the record, my grandparents came from Sweden in the 1890s and settled in Minnesota. The last time I checked, Minnesota fought on the side of the Union, so I have no vested interest in the Confederacy. I am, however, a historian by professional training, taught college-level American history before coming to Washington. I believe the lesson to teach our students is that we are a nation under the rule of law. There have been a few of you who have acted honorably in this respect, and I thank you for that greatly. But the majority has employed stealth, violation of your own regulations, which are not optional, obfuscation, and manipulation of statistics to suit a predetermined outcome. If our committee truly wanted to change the name for a positive reason that was widely supported in an open and transparent way, and if this board had devoted to our children all the time and money already spent on this dubious effort, I wouldn't be standing here. Put our kids first, and that would be equity. Sandy, our community is approaching 80% of the signatures required to seek your recall from office. And Board members, last Friday after school hours, citizen volunteers assembled at three local schools to collect more signatures. In each case, they were approached promptly by, and I say promptly, by school security staff and ordered off of school property, or there would be the calling of the Fairfax County Police when these people were peacefully exercising their constitutional right to petition and to seek redress of grievance. That's equity? Or are totalitarian regime tactics the real face of the new One Fairfax policy?
Thank you. The next speaker is Tony Yang.
Good evening, thanks School Board and administrators to give me the opportunity to speak tonight. And it's my first time to speak as a public school board, because in the past time, I think our school did a great job. We have a great school. If you go to every school, you have great teachers and students are learning. Just so I have 100% faith to our school board and our school system. Just recently, I'm caught a little bit concerned about it, because I heard that we decided to spend $1 million just to change the school name for no reason. And so I want to provide some feedback as a private citizen about the One Fairfax policy. So the concern I have is that if the policy gets wrong, it will add up, hurt our community, hurt our school. And equity is a great word. It's all depends on how you to achieve it. For example, every kid is different, and every kid has different talent. I have two kids. One of them is very good at math. He has a lot of talent in math, but another one is very good at English. He wrote a lot of very long story I couldn't understand somehow, but he is good at math, but his English is not very well, as good as math. Another one is just opposite. So there are two kids in my family, they cannot reach the equity in math and English. So I don't know how you can reach the equity for every kid in the whole school system. If the One Fairfax policy add up, we get a one suit for everybody, it's a bad suit, because you cannot have one suit to fit everybody, right? You cannot have same one shoe for everybody to wear. People have different size, right? That's why you go to store, you have different size of shoes. So there are many things I can talk about, but I don't have time. So I think, I hope that the policy should really consider about potential unfairness or penalize hard worker and high achiever. Don't lower the standard and choose a phantom route course, and prohibit any risk or other type of quotas or equivalent in AEP and Thomas Jefferson enrollment, and prohibit waste of money in school naming. And if we have resource, we should put to the classroom, give to the school to get more equipment, give to the student who have from a lower economic background. That's what we should do. And thank you. Have a great time. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fred Costello.
I want to make two points tonight relative to One Fairfax. One, we voters need to know your personal background, so we can understand how you will judge what is equitable. Second, we need to eliminate inequities in the whole voting process. Okay, first, you have demonstrated by your decisions on Policy 1450 and on Jeb Stuart that you do not make your decisions on the basis of what the majority of people want. Now we face One Fairfax. Your decisions then are made of what you think is right and wrong. We voters need to know the basis for your judgment as to what is right and wrong. We need to know where you were raised, what school you attended, when you went to college, what your degree was, what your major was, and where you work. We also need to know if you believe in a personal God, as the Jews, Christians, and Muslims believe, what religious denomination you are, and where and how often you attend community religious services. We need to know these facts about all candidates, not just you, but anybody running for the school board. This background information gives us some basis, as voters, some basis, to judge how you will rule, because you're ruling, okay? You're not going along with the majority. I've asked if your background by email. Nobody has responded, okay? We need to know, get the secret out, okay? Second, because we vote for you, we need to have voter equity. Voter turnout in the election of school board members is so low that school and county employees and their spouses constitute 34% of the voters. You give this huge voting block raises and benefits that far exceed what the private sector gets. They return the favor by voting for you. That's collusion. I have attended school functions where the teachers have urged us to vote for the raises, so the block probably includes more than parents, everybody there attends those functions. In your salary negotiations, you and the employees sit on the same side of the table. Nobody is representing the taxpayers. This is legalized corruption that is generating a government elite, a serious inequity. One solution is term limits. A better solution might be to prohibit county employees from participating in election campaigns, such as done by the Hatch Act for federal employees. So there are two points for you that I'd like you to take home tonight. One is give us your personal background, so we have some basis to judge how you will judge, okay? And second is to introduce term limits, like they have in our neighboring Montgomery County, okay? But maybe to two terms. Or institute the equivalent of the Hatch Act at the county level. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Norm Hall.
Good evening, Chairman Strauss, members of the school board. My name is Norm Hall. I'm here tonight as the father of a daughter with special needs and an FCPS teacher tutor volunteer. Having seen classrooms throughout Fairfax County at every grade level, and with several modes of instructional service delivery, I am proud to be a founding member of the Fairfax County Special Education PTA and serve as SEPTA's Advocacy Committee Chair. Tonight, I would like to express support for the One Fairfax Initiative and to give voice to the hope that this effort will lead to better services for each of the 14% of FCPS students who require special education services. May they thrive and become productive community members here in Fairfax County. The One Fairfax policy commits the public schools to work in partnership with others to utilize the influence of each institution to leverage and expand opportunity. With regard to accountability, Fairfax County government and schools will incorporate data and publish performance measures that can be analyzed, quantified, and disaggregated to evaluate the extent to which our systems are achieving goals identified through the Racial and Social Equity Plan. It is my hope that One Fairfax will be the impetus for a robust data collection system to manage special ed services. The data system should be designed for analysis of disaggregated information about the ways that special ed is provided. The goal would be an ongoing, comprehensive understanding of staffing needs, program efficacy, and performance needs within the special education population and throughout various areas of the county. As noted in our SEPTA statement regarding the strategic plan update and the comprehensive plan, FCPS is required to address at-risk communities. Likewise, One Fairfax states the intent to provide equity within the county, and yet the focus of these initiatives has not specifically addressed the issue of special education disability needs, performance gaps, and social support. It is important that we view special needs populations as part of our whole community rather than siloed. It is critical that we understand how various disenfranchised groups overlap our population and how the overlaps affect successful community outcomes. An example from the National Council on Disability. Studies show that up to 85% of youth in juvenile detention facilities have disabilities that make them eligible for special education services, yet only 37% receive these services while in school. A disproportionate percentage of these detained youth are youth of color. As a member of Concerned Fairfax, I know this statement applies to us as well. I am encouraged both by the stated equity goals and the spirit of community collaboration of One Fairfax. A more robust discussion of special education at a detailed level is what students, families, and teachers deserve. SEPTA is a willing partner in implementing the One Fairfax policy. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have two video testimonies. The first is presented by Robert Rigby.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Braybrand and senior staff. My name is Robert Rigby. Since the passage of the update of the nondiscrimination policy to include gender identity, I have become an active ally of the transgender community. You may have noticed over several members' meetings that members of that community and allies have been advocating here at the school board. Specifically- allies have been advocating here at the school board, specifically for detailed regulations, but also to increase awareness and acceptance of the community. You have seen trans employees, parents, children, parents of trans students, and allies at these meetings, sitting on the left side of the auditorium. You may also have seen the blue and pink trans pride flags. We are not here tonight because November 20th is what is known as the Transgender Day of Remembrance. On this day each year, the community and allies gather to remember and acknowledge people who have lost their lives in the past 12 months because of anti-trans violence. Many of us are at memorial services around the area. At the services, people read the names of each person who has died this year, re-acknowledge and mourn. This year, there are at least 25 names of people in the United States, including two from Virginia, of all races and genders. But many are trans women of color and some are homeless. Statistically, the incidence of anti-trans violence in the country has increased dramatically in recent times. Fairfax County Public Schools has taken many of the right steps within its purview, and you as board members and senior staff have loved that effort. In particular, FCPS teaches about gender identity in transgender people in some of its family life education lessons, and gender identity is included in the sexual harassment video and in the broader nondiscrimination policy. This teaching of awareness and acceptance will go far to mitigate the fear and hatred that motivate anti-trans violence in our broader community. Thank you. For tonight's agenda, you are considering our school system's legislative agenda. In front of the Virginia General Assembly, each year, a number of nondiscrimination bills that include protections for trans people. I encourage you to add support for those bills to the legislative agenda. We saw in Danica Rome's victory on November 7th that Virginia is in general support, or at least are okay with, trans people as full members of the community. Including such support in nondiscrimination laws will help decrease the violence that some of our students will encounter and will help some of our students with future healthcare, housing, finances, and employment. It will also help transgender parents of some of our students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our last video testimony is presented by Ed Hara.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the One Fairfax policy. Currently, the One Fairfax policy inappropriately includes gender identity. Besides questionable legality of the county government creating a new special class to promote sexual behavior, its inclusion is deceptively misleading. Gender identity is actually a rare medical condition and psychiatric disorder called gender dysphoria. Gender dysphoria is more common among children than adults. Up to 90% of children with gender dysphoria have been found to desist. Gender dysphoria typically disappears between late adolescence to early adulthood after going through puberty. By adulthood, 99.99% of the population is aligned with their natural biological sex. Because so many children desist naturally, it demonstrates they do not have opposite-sex brains nor are born in the wrong body, as frequently falsely claimed. Adults with gender dysphoria frequently suffer from depression and have been found to have a suicidal rate of 40%. One of the treatment options for children with gender dysphoria is the wait-and-see method, which is basically to wait until adulthood to see if persistent. Up to 90% of children with gender dysphoria have been found to desist. Children and adults who desist and are heterosexual have the lowest suicide rate. Another treatment option is the controversial Dutch Protocol Method of Transitioning Early. Children who transition early have been found to have a higher rate of persistence. In addition, puberty blockers affect the persistence of gender dysphoria. Regardless, those who undergo gender reassignment surgery have a long-term suicidal rate 19 times higher than the general population. Subsequently, the Dutch Protocol Method leads to higher suicide rates, whereas the wait-and-see approach should be encouraged as a large majority of gender dysphoric children will naturally desist and lead to the lowest suicide rate. Many psychiatric experts question the moral ethical use of the Dutch Protocol Method. Subsequently, school systems should not be engaging in high-risk and harmful social experiments. In addition, there is a growing concern of harmful social contagion among the general student body by normalizing glamorizing a medical condition known as gender dysphoria. In conclusion, it is recommended that the school system support the wait-and-see approach as the best way to reduce depression and suicides among gender dysphoric children. It is also recommended to not include gender identity in the new One Fairfax policy. In addition, gender identity should be removed from all other school policies and regulations like Policy 1450 and the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Document. Thank you for listening this evening, and references have been provided.
Thank you. That ends the citizen participation part of this meeting. Next, we have Student Representative Matters, and I call on Ms. Vedakonda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to address the main matters on the floor tonight. The One Fairfax policy is a critical step we need to take as a school system before we can move forward with more equitable schools for all of our students. We've seen for too long that some of our schools are perpetually struggling to meet state accreditation standards, and some of our students don't have the resources they need to meet their full potential. And with the Inclusive Schools Week just ahead of us, I can think of no better opportunity to reaffirm this board's commitment to equitable schools and equal opportunity for all students. On the topic of the legislative program, I advocated at our last work session the need to make mental health and suicide prevention a major part of our student wellness positions. Our existing legislative program only really focuses on directing attention towards childhood obesity, but mental health and suicide prevention are equally important to making sure that our students are receiving comprehensive wellness services so that they are able to focus on learning. That's why I'll be supporting Ms. McLaughlin's amendment to change the language of that section to include childhood obesity along with childhood and adolescent sleep, student mental health, suicide prevention as issues that we need more support for. I would like to encourage all of you to support this amendment to make sure that our legislative program clearly articulates the board's support of mental health and suicide prevention as a critical component of student wellness. Thank you.
Thank you. While our agenda says that we will confirm action taken in closed meeting, we actually have not finished our closed business, and we will be going back into closed session at the end of the meeting. So we will go on to One Fairfax policy, and I call on Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I move that the school board adopt the One Fairfax policy as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Darnak Kofax. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, briefly. I am very excited that our board is having this opportunity to publicly affirm our commitment to equity in Fairfax County and for all citizens. This has been a joint effort that began in July 2016 when both the Fairfax County Board Supervisors and the school board jointly adopted our One Fairfax Resolution, which was again our commitment to ensuring equity for all. But beyond the resolution, it then became important for us to demonstrate our commitment that beyond the public statements, that we could communicate with intentionality and with action what this will mean for our county. And as someone who comes from a family which my husband and his siblings arrived here in 1971, the face of Fairfax County has changed greatly. We are a much more diverse community, and I am so proud that both the board supervisors and the school board recognizes that it's very important that we communicate out to this jurisdiction of our 1 million people that not only are all welcome and celebrated for their diversity, but more importantly, we need to be mindful that when there are equity gaps, when there are equity challenges and opportunity gaps for our students, whether it's for our citizens, then we need to demonstrate that commitment. And so finally, to a question that was raised in an email from a constituent earlier in the day, I do want to reassure citizens, when we talk about equity for all, what we're saying is that we want to ensure that everyone has opportunity. And there's been some fear that if we promote equity or give more intentionality equity for some, that others may then, if there's going to be a trade-off or a loss. And I firmly believe that this commitment is meant to ensure that our county is an opportunity for every single one to be successful. It's not giving up one part of our population for the advantages of another, but it is to say that just looking at our data alone, we know regrettably that we still have a tale of two cities sometimes here in Fairfax County, and that we really need to be intentional as your elected officials, working with the tremendous dedication of Superintendent Bray Brand, our county executive, all of the county and school employees who spend every day trying to ensure that all children can be successful, that all employees have equal opportunity for success in their careers. But we have to be intentional about that. And so I hope for citizens who haven't had a chance that you'll read through the policy, that we're talking about when we're doing county planning, when we're delivering of county services, all of it matters, including what we do here in our public schools. So to my colleagues, I look forward to seeing your support this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Darnak Kofax, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly, Madam Chair. Commenting much the same as Ms. McLaughlin is, I'm happy to second this. And the essence of this policy basically puts into place with intentionality the goal of achieving equity in parity in all that we do in our school system. As a representative of Region 3, I have seen firsthand the changing face of Fairfax, and it's imperative that we provide equal opportunities for all. And in a public school system, we need to do that for all, and I often use the statement, making sure we don't take from one part of the community in order to achieve something and another. We have to make sure we have equity and parity in everything that we do. And this policy, it highlights the areas of focus that our schools and the county have been working on and committed to for over many years. It highlights some of the things we currently have in our strategic plan, what the county has in their strategic focus, what the parks and park system is doing. And all of these things are combined in this policy, so you can see that singularly what we're doing and what we plan to do together as we move forward. I do believe this policy will help us to guide and inform our collective actions and continue to support a community that's thriving and with the goal of achieving, as I said, intentional equity in our community. So I encourage my colleagues to support this One Fairfax policy. Ms. McLaughlin didn't mention that she and I have been on Skipped for the last few years. This is kind of the genesis of this. It's a group of community leaders, so that it includes school board, board of supervisors, and other community leaders to come together and say, how can we work better in a more progressive, forward-thinking way to make sure every student's needs are met where they are? And I think this policy will help us to achieve those goals.
Thank you. Seeing no other, yes, Mrs. Schultz.
So this is going to be one of those truth-telling comments from Elizabeth Schultz. We heard from citizens leading up to this in different communities, and from what I heard from the dais tonight, perpetually reaching accreditation issues, or not reaching accreditation issues, students not having what they need, that we need parity in the school system, that we need equal opportunity, that we need to not take from one part of the community to give to another, that we need to guide our collective actions, and we need to have intentional equity. If we're not doing things related to intentional equity, what does passing another policy do that we can't look at Dr. Bray Brand and all of your staff and our 40,000 employees and say, we are not being intentionally equitable? Because by passing this, we're saying we're not being intentionally equitable. We're saying we're indicting ourselves and all previous school boards by saying we weren't intentionally equitable, so now we're going to be, because we're going to pass some words that say we're going to be going forward. If we're not intentionally equitable, fix it. We got a $2.8 billion budget. You think we don't take from part of one community and give to another? We absolutely do. We don't give recess because we don't focus on a legislative agenda that says, let's all 12 get on a bus and go down to Virginia, to Richmond, and advocate for the one or two things we should be focusing on. Instead, we go far afield. We rename schools. We get ourselves involved in all kinds of social justice warrior-ing instead of directing resources back to a classroom. Of course, we take from one part of the community and give to another. It's what we do best. And so the notion that a elected body, and whether it's the board of supervisors or us, putting together a bunch of language that says, well, now we're going to be equitable because we've passed a policy that says we're going to be equitable. We're not. There's 13 kids in one classroom in third grade in one area of the county, and there's 31 in another. Is that equitable? It's not equitable. Some of my kids are on school bus rides for 50 minutes. Another is on a ride for seven. Is that equitable? No. We have elementary students who start later than all the other elementary students and get home at almost 5:00 at night. Not equitable. Nobody said you get equal. But the notion that by passing a policy, that we put together language and that we're going to pretend that we're not going to do more of the same, I can't participate in this anymore. And I really wish that we would just pull the mask off and say what we're really trying to do here, because I haven't figured it out. I've asked. If we're, one answer I got was we're reaffirming our laws, or we're reaffirming our policies. Well, then why doesn't the policy say we're just going to reaffirm all the policies we already have, or we reaffirm laws we already have? And if this started in Skipped, which Skipped was really about early education and access, really about preschool, how many times have I put forward budget amendments redirecting some of our budget on a priority basis to really put money into preschool, to actually give staff and say, we're going to open new preschool classrooms and provide access primarily first to four-year-olds because you have one year and then they're on our doorstep anyway? But we haven't done that either. So this is where the frustration is, there's been a lot of time put to this. I mean, this is not the first time this has come up. There was a lot of staff time went into this. They went around to every board of supervisors and presented to them. This has been talked about in Skipped, this has been talked about in the board of supervisors, talked about here. The issue is, is that if there's something in our existing policies, our existing regulations, and existing legislation at Richmond that isn't working, go fix that. But don't put new language forth that says, well, now we're going to be one. Now we're going to be equitable. So I will probably be the only elected official in Fairfax County that says, I'm not going to participate in this anymore. The reality is, we need to roll up our sleeves and take our $2.8 billion budget. If you feel like there's something that isn't equitable, then address it through the money. You know, there's an adage that says, do not tell me what your values are. Show me what your budget is, and I'll tell you what your values are. That's where the rubber meets the road. And it is policies like this that I feel like get us in trouble with trust factors with certain areas of our community, whether it's taxpayers, certain segments of our community. This doesn't open the door to imbuing more trust with our taxpayers and with our parents and with our employees. I think it just makes us look like we're really good wordsmiths.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Yes, I want to thank those that worked so hard on this policy, particularly Ms. Darnak Kofax and Ms. McLaughlin as members of Skipped, as well as all those on Skipped. This has been in the works for some time. We have had quite a few conversations about this. We've had several work sessions on it. We have put this out to the community, and I think it's quite a fine product to voice this very important policy about equity. Policies are how the board speaks to the community and talks about where we are going and where we want to be. This is a statement of our values. we want to be. This is a statement of our values, and it talks about the future of ensuring that we have racial and social equity, as well as socioeconomic equity. We want to be sure that everyone, every student, has the ability, the opportunity, to reach their highest level of achievement. And this is a statement to that effect. We do have 17 areas of very detailed focus, everything from digital access to transportation, to housing, to early childhood development. It is a very meaty policy and a very meaty statement that has been a long time in the works. So this is an important statement that we are making as a board, that we are making with our partners on the county side, and I am very pleased to support it.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. Much of what I wanted to say has already been said by Mrs. Evans. I do want to thank Ms. Darnett Kofax and Ms. McLaughlin on their hard work, as well as all the members of Skipped. But I wanted to address one of the questions that came up earlier, which is, why do we need this? You know, why do we need it if we already have a focus on equity? We all talk about equity. Well, the reason this policy is so important is because it lays out a joint framework between the Board of Supervisors and the school board on the values that this county has for equity and inclusion. And it doesn't single out one group versus another. It doesn't pit one socioeconomic or racial group against another one. What it does say is that we value individuals. We value our differentiation in our community, the diversity that we have in our community, and we value the opportunities that are available here in Fairfax County, and that we want those opportunities and the ability for every child and every person to achieve at their highest potential. And the way we do that is with intention and deliberate acts. And that's what this One Fairfax is. It is a deliberate commitment by every member of the school board and every member of the Board of Supervisors to work together to achieve a greater Fairfax. And that is why I am very happy to support the One Fairfax policy.
Ms. Palchak.
Thank you. I will echo some of my colleague's sentiments. I think what is most striking about this policy is I believe it is one of only a handful across the nation that it's a joint policy between the school board and, in our case, the Board of Supervisors. So I really, truly want to thank... I see that many of members of both the school and the county are here tonight who have worked endlessly, and perhaps Ms. Strauss can recognize them later, who have worked endlessly to meet with us, to meet with the Board of Supervisors, to listen to the community and to stakeholders. It is, as you know, only a first step to pass this policy. And so I do hope that my colleagues will join us tonight in this effort. It is not in any way saying that we have accomplished this or that we will in the near future, but truly that we are dedicated and that we see this as an important and critical undertaking for our community. If I may borrow Dr. Duran's words from the last MSAOC meeting, there is a common image on equity where you see three people trying to look inside of, over a wall, over a wall into a stadium. You have one that is able to look, one that is too short, and they are given two boxes to stand on, and one that is given one box to stand on, so that they can all see over together in an equitable fashion. And Dr. Duran said, he likes to interpret it as, rather than giving them boxes, let's break down the wall. And so I think, I hope I'm saying that correctly, Dr. Duran. I think what's really important about this is that there are things that we have tried to do, and efforts and intentions to try to break down some of those barriers. And I think what our staff and the community are doing is to say, let's figure out what works. Let's figure out what we're doing, and let's figure out, most importantly, what we're not doing, based on best practices and how we allocate our budget and our values around that. I think that is really important. I think it's the beginning of a process. We are not that far away from the time of desegregation, less than 60 years, and there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. And I will just leave you with the words interpreted of Horace Mann and his vision of the common school. "It was not in the traditional European sense of a school for the common people, but in a new sense of a school common to all people. It was to be available and equal to all, part of a birthright of every American child. It was to be for rich and poor alike, not only free, but the equivalent in quality of any comparable private institution. And it would mix the children of all creeds, classes, and backgrounds, the warm association of childhood kindling in a spirit of mutual amity and respect, which the strains and cleavages of adult life could never destroy." So we have been having this conversation for decades and really beyond that. And we have our shortcomings, and we are still struggling as many districts to try to end our opportunity gap. And so, no, this is not a silver bullet, but I think it's an important first step, and I will be fully supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Yeah, thank you very much. I remember the principal at my children's elementary school, Louise Archer, used to say, equity does not mean everyone gets the same. It means everyone gets what they need. And I think we all understand that. We don't, as a school board, roll up our sleeves and do the day-to-day work. We don't. Staff does that, right? What we do is we guide staff. We try to guide staff on behalf of the community through the myriad of competing priorities that we face in this community to ensure that the school system in its work day-to-day is reflecting the values of this community. We do that when we vote on a budget, but we also do that when we vote on important policy statements like this. This community is not confused about what equity means or how important it is for our schools to provide equitable opportunities for our children. That's clear. We know that our community values this, and it's really time that we said something, that we said this. With this policy tonight, we commit to opportunity for all, on behalf of this community, opportunity for all, but not for some at others' expense. And I think that's something that's been touched on a little bit here tonight. I understand parents' concerns that their children have every opportunity and are treated fairly, and that they get the value of their hard work. That makes complete sense, and we would never do anything as a school system to risk that. It's the most important thing. The goals and hopes of parents and students are valid and understandable, of course. But we, as a school system, as a school system, our goal must be to assure the community that public education here is not a zero-sum game. Opportunity through education is in our national DNA, all the way back to our founders, you know? People have come to this country for hundreds of years, generations, my own family came here, for opportunity through education. You know, we know that the streets aren't paved with gold. We know that money doesn't grow on trees, but we still do that one thing very well. Think of all the opportunities that your children have once they leave high school here. How many thousands of really excellent colleges and universities are available? How many thousands of graduate programs? How many people do you know in their 30s, 40s, 50s are still going back to school to continue to improve, to continue to provide better opportunities for themselves and their families? We do that very well. We are not a country where, at the age of 15, you take a test and it determines what high school you go to, which determines whether or not you have a professional life or a blue-collar life. We don't do that here. And, you know, hopefully, we never will. So I think it's really important for us to say that with this policy, we explicitly reject that ethos of scarcity that would pit students against each other and families against each other. Public education is a promise of plenty, and it is our job to keep that promise, our job. This policy is the guiding light we need to evaluate all we do through an equity lens. And I look forward to some specific outcomes. I think we have some dashboards coming along. I hope that will allow the community to see right on our website how we're doing when it comes to equity. And I, you know, I certainly expect and hope that we will see improvements in outcomes for kids as a result of this. So I wholeheartedly support this.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Thank you. I will be joining many of my colleagues in supporting this policy today. But I also think it's important, as I've listened to some of the input that we've heard today, to say what this policy is not. We obviously are not penalizing people for hard work. We're not choosing political favorites. I think one of the speakers brought up that, you know, one of the greatest things about our nation is tolerance, and I agree with that. And I think that this policy embraces that. But I think that it also acknowledges that though we've made a lot of progress, we never stop trying. We never stop working hard. And I think it's important to really say what it does say as opposed to what it doesn't say, because it was alluded to that perhaps we're not engendering trust or we're creating division. This policy is about bringing people together and serving our community in an equitable fashion with fidelity. And even though we have laws on the books, we can always work harder. So it says clearly that these policies that prohibit all forms of discrimination in paragraph 17, under federal and state law, and county and school system activities, and ensure that all practices provide fair treatment, and it goes on to list a number of groups. Fair treatment is at the core of this policy. And so I am proud to join my colleagues in a commitment to equity with fidelity and fair treatment for all in our Fairfax County schools. Thank you.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be supporting this policy proposal that, in addition to what Ms. Karen Keys-Gamarra has already stated about what this policy is not, that this policy is certainly not lowering standard for anyone. We all know that equity is not exactly the same as equality. The equity under this policy will be to provide meaningful opportunities for all students based upon their needs. And different students have different needs. It's how do we find opportunities for all of them? That's what this policy is looking to achieve. And I only have two sons. They are all grown up. I think they are grown up, at least by their age, and they have done very well. However, I must tell you that they had different needs. You know, one son would be doing all of his homework just on his own, but the other son needed constant attention from parents just to make sure that all the work has been done. That required, obviously, more time from their parents compared to the other son. Not that he didn't do his homework, but we need to make sure that he did his homework. One son would be writing two paragraph essays on the same essay prompt, whereas the other son would be simply writing two, three sentences and say, I am done. So that would require additional attention from parents to look through, asking some probing questions. Why, you know, you might want to think about certain things and et cetera. That's what you are trying to accomplish under this equity policy, meeting the needs of each and every student.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Just quickly, as a go-back, I very much welcome and appreciate all the robust comments that my colleagues have added to this conversation, so that, again, our community can understand why we're taking this action this evening. And for my colleagues who may not be aware, the Board of Supervisors are scheduled to vote tomorrow at their committee meeting. I believe it's their Human Relations Committee meeting, that they'll be voting on this. And in their most recent public discussion, it appeared all but one board member was certain to be voting in support of it. And so to my colleague, Ms. Delia Palchak, as she noted, this is really unique, and it is something to be celebrated, that the Board of Supervisors and the school board, together with intentionality, are trying to communicate out to our 1 million citizens, our commitment to equity for all. And Ms. Schultz, I appreciate that you always bring diverse perspective, and if we're celebrating diversity tonight, that includes diverse perspective.
That's my equity.
So, but one thing that I was the benefit of getting to hear through our work with Skipped is that our county director for the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court, Bob Birmingham, he spoke to what something like this policy would mean. He was one of the first to start looking at our disparities in the juvenile court system. When you look at subgroups, racial subgroups, that there was disparity. And so he took a very reflective look as the director of that court system and said, what are our practices? And even if we deliver with best intentions, what can we look at on closer examination and identify where we might be creating inequity or disparities? And that's the goal of a policy like this. Ms. Evans, you said it beautifully. Our ability to communicate out to not just our employees, but to our community is through policy. And then that helps guide the great work of staff. And so with that, I do want to take the liberty of acknowledging three very hard-working individuals who are in the audience with us this evening. Karen Shabon and Carla Bruce from the County Services, thank you so much for your great work on this. And I do also want to acknowledge Marion Panarelli from Fairfax County Public Schools, also with us here tonight, along with Francisco Duran, who works so hard. Thank you both. And so with that, I do think it's so important that everybody understand, we know this is just the next step in our intentionality. Each and every day, it is going to be through our actions, through not just the policies but the practices, that we continue to improve the outcomes for all citizens here in Fairfax County. And with that, I hope it allows our community to remain faithful and hopeful that everyone can succeed when they live here. And so I look forward to the support here tonight for this policy.
Thank you. I would like to read the opening paragraph to this policy, so that those who are watching at home have some idea of why it is that the school board and the Board of Supervisors have entered into this, really two years' worth of work. Helping people reach their highest level of personal achievement is vital to our county's successful ability to compete in the global economy. Linking our residents and families to opportunities, including education, workforce development, employment, and affordable housing helps ensure lifelong learning, better health, resilience, and economic success. The systems, structures, and settings in which our residents and families live, work, play, and learn create an equitable community and are in part a product of policy and resourcing decisions. It is up to the school board and the Board of Supervisors to provide a community where all of our citizens have an opportunity to work hard and to achieve high levels of achievement. So we recognize and support all the things that our residents, our children, our families, our business communities do to help everyone succeed. But it is up to the two bodies, elected bodies, working together to make sure the infrastructure is there and that everyone has the chance to succeed and to find their dream. We do have a very, very diverse community. We have many people who have come here, many recently, to achieve a certain dream. And it is that dream that we want to help you all find and succeed. So with that, I will call for the vote. All those to support the One Fairfax policy, please indicate your support. It is Evans, McLaughlin, Palchak, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Darnett Kofax, Keys-Gamarra. Opposed? Abstention? Ms. Schultz. That motion passes. Thank you very much, colleagues.
The next item is the School Board's 2018 State and Federal Legislative Program, and I call on Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the board adopt the Fairfax County School Board's 2018 State and Federal Legislative Program. And I call on Mr. McElveen. I move that the Board adopt the Fairfax County School Board's 2018 State and Federal Legislative Program.
Second? Second by Ms. Derinette Kofex. Mr. McAveen?
Thank you. So as all of us at the dais know, the School Board annually adopts a legislative program as well as legislative priorities in order to inform our local, state, and federal public officials and others of our positions on legislative policy issues of importance to FCPS. The program contains the School Board's positions on state and federal issues of major and current significance. The 2018 program will include additions, deletions, and formatting changes from the 2017 program. These changes and updates are intended to reflect actions taken over the past year by state and federal government to reflect the current policy climate and policy debates, and to clarify, simplify, and streamline existing position language where appropriate. We have discussed the program at a work session last Monday, a week ago, today, and our staff brought to us several formatting changes that have already been included in the program based on that discussion, proffers, among other issues. So thank you to my colleagues for bringing forward those suggestions at the work session. I also think we have some terrific and thoughtful amendments tonight, and I don't just say that because one of the amendments is my own. I do want to thank my colleagues, Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Corbett Sanders, for their efforts in crafting some very useful amendments. Many of you may know that today was the first day to prefile legislation, very well timed, if I do say so myself, with our program adoption tonight. I know many of our legislators were already asking us for ideas at today's Education Foundation luncheon. As we do every year, we will have the opportunity to meet with our legislators on December 5th. Finally, I do want to thank our esteemed colleague, Michael Malloy, who is on the ground every day during session, addressing these issues with our state delegation. And with that, pass it back to Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Derinette Kofex, would you like to speak to your second?
Certainly, briefly. I do want to thank Mr. Malloy for his hard work in bringing this forward to us. And I, as I second this, I am going to take out my role as the internal optimist, and I am hoping that some of our priority positions that are very important can be achieved this year. One of the things I want to speak to specifically is the Local Composite Index. And for the public, that determines a school division's ability to pay its educational costs. It's calculated on the true value of real property, adjusted gross income, and taxable retail sales. And because a community is judged in its aggregate, and Fairfax is one of the wealthiest counties in the U.S., this formula does not take into account the deep and growing pockets of poverty in our community. It doesn't address that at all. And to give you a perspective on how this is manifesting itself in schools in my area, when I arrived on this board six years ago, 40% of my schools were Title I schools. Now 76% of my schools are Title I schools. And with poverty rates as high as 92% in the schools, the LCI does not help us at all in that. As a matter of fact, we get 20 cents back on a dollar. So all of my advocates out there, you're doing excellent job in the work that you're advocating, but make sure when you are down there, this is one of the things you talk about. And the other thing that I think is extremely important that we have to talk about as a system, while we have a very friendly, wonderful delegation here in Northern Virginia, and we speak to the choir when we speak to them every year, Virginia does not fare well as a state as far as dollars dedicated to K-12 education. We are 43rd out of 50 states in the nation. Imagine how much better we would be off. This legislative package would have to be a lot smaller, and could be a lot smaller if those two issues themselves were ones that we could deal with effectively in Richmond. So with that, as I said, I am hopeful, and, you know, with the change in the, with the House and the Senate down there, we will hopefully have more education advocates. And again, with this, you know, particularly with the LCI, there's always that comment that it kind of goes back to the conversation we were having before. We don't want to take from other parts of the community. We just want to get what we need as a community because our needs are changing, and we need to have those changes recognized when we talk about our ability to pay as a system. So, thank you.
Thank you. We now have three amendments, and the amendments come as a result of discussion at our work session last week. Just so the community understands, Mr. Malloy, who is our legislative person who works with the General Assembly in Richmond, he comes forward with recommended language and changes for us to discuss at our work session. We also, by the way, work with our Board of Supervisors. We jointly adopt certain positions that we hope to succeed with at the General Assembly. And then after the work session, School Board members will listen to members of the community and have suggestions for further clarifications or amendments to the legislative program so that when we begin our work with the General Assembly, we have a full package of issues that we wish to, our General Assembly would recognize this year. And I want to make sure that I have the order correctly. We have an amendment from Mr. McAveen. We have amendments from Ms. McLaughlin, and amendments from Ms. Corbett Sanders. Yes? Okay. Make sure that we have the order. It's a little complicated. So, Mr. McAveen, I will call on you for the first amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to add the following language to Position S, Standards of Accreditation and Standards of Learning between Items 15 and 16, and remaining positions are renumbered accordingly. The Fairfax County School Board supports providing local school divisions with greater flexibility in determining the appropriate allocation of instructional time in elementary schools across specific subject areas. Such flexibility would allow school divisions the opportunity to restructure the educational environment based on current research and to provide adequate time for recess.
Second? Second by Ms. Evans. Mr. McAveen, would you like to speak?
So as we heard from our constituents, Teresa and Cecilia, earlier tonight, our Board does have an amendment tonight that we are considering, in which we advocate for more flexibility in allocating instructional time in elementary schools in order to provide more time for recess. This proposal is very much in line with our general interest in this program and all prior programs to increase local autonomy in general. Over the past several years, we have heard from our Student Health Advisory Committee through the wellness policy that they spent many hours deliberating and bringing to us about how important recess is. We have taken particular attention to this issue this year, discussing the issue, issues of not withholding recess as a disciplinary act, as well as the importance of having recess prior to lunch. All of these are enshrined in policy, but it is important for the Board to continue to reinforce them. I think all of us can agree that advocacy works best when our elected officials can collaborate with advocacy groups. This Board has done so in recent years with sleep, with real food for kids, among others. And I'm hopeful that we can add more recess for Fairfax to the list of advocacy groups whose desires have been achieved in collaboration with the School Board. I'm so proud that, as we heard tonight, our homegrown advocacy group on this issue is now taking a stand statewide through More Recess for Virginia, and we wish them the greatest success. We look forward to joining them and advocating on this issue.
Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your second?
I would. Thank you. I'm very pleased to second this amendment, and thank you, Mr. McAveen, for your work on bringing this forward, and thank you to the advocates for, again, joining us tonight and for joining Shack to voice your advocacy on this and other things regarding recess as well. This is an important change, which I hope the state listens to us and to the advocates on this. Recession has gotten squeezed out over the years, and part of the reason was a very, what seemed at the time like a somewhat minor change that the state made a few years back, where they said, "Well, recess can't be encountered in the five and a half hours of instruction time." And so even though that seemed like a relatively minor change at the time, that meant that it, it meant that in order to keep those five and a half hours, that it, and have lunch, that we had less and less time for recess. So I think we are trying to gain that back with our full-day Mondays of a couple of years ago. That did help. That gave us a little bit more flexibility, a little bit more time. But we still aren't there. And this is something that Shack has believed in for a while. Sometimes it has, it has waxed and waned, and so I think that the, having the advocates come forward and keep it at the forefront is also important. As Mr. McAveen said, we also are planning to have an amendment about, to our own policy, about not withholding recess as, for discipline. That is still in the works. We, I believe that will be new business at the next meeting. I've seen some draft language, and hopefully we can get that done by our December 14th meeting. But this would be a significant step forward, so I very strongly support the state giving us more flexibility so we can create more recess time for our little ones.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, I just want to thank very much the advocates. I know we all do, you know, when we have a group of parents who are persistent and knowledgeable, don't give up. It really, it does make a difference. There's so much, so much noise, so much going on in a school system of 187,000 students, you know, that we don't always focus on the things that are probably the most important. And we've known for a while how important this is and how it's getting squeezed, and we're not, really, I think, haven't been quite sure what to do about it. As an elementary teacher myself, I do know how important recess is and how hard it is to continue to set aside the proper amount of time for it. And so what do we do? Now, we're working very hard within the classroom to reintroduce student-directed activities, right, into classwork, and to reintroduce voice and choice and all those opportunities for kids to do learning through play and problem-solving and all of that. But really, that's what the playground provides for them without any, any adult in there telling them how to do it or what to do. And it really is the ideal time of the day for them to do that kind of learning. So I'm excited. This is, thank you so much to Mr. McAveen and Mr. Malloy for pulling this together. I know these kind of changes take more work than you would expect, so I appreciate this.
Ms. Palczek?
Yes, thank you. Briefly, also just want to add, thank the advocates and my colleagues and Mr. McAveen. I think it's important that we start to find the right balance between state and local control. I think while the state, standards of learning are important to have across the region, across the Commonwealth, it is important for school systems to be able to figure out the best way to do that and to take care of their kids. In addition, doing quite a bit of work now with our, our mental health needs and our student wellness, and it is just so critical when we're looking at building resiliency in kids. And having that unstructured playtime is just so important. So we really appreciate you coming out here, working with us and with the community, and especially with our legislators in Richmond. Thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, thank you. I too want to thank the community for coming forth with this, but I also want to encourage you to work across jurisdictional lines because this, my colleagues, many of us raised the issue while we were at the recent VSBA meeting, and there was a lot of support with boards from across the state on this issue. And so I would encourage that you use the efforts of the Fairfax County Council of PTAs, the Virginia PTAs, and in speaking with the individual legislators themselves. But there is a bit of a groundswell being created on this issue. I would also like to talk a little bit about why flexibility is a better approach. As we are looking at 21st century learning, one of the things that we're realizing is that the traditional models for education, where there were stovepipes for each academic area, no longer is applying, and that with problem-based learning and with more innovative approaches to how we're addressing core subjects, we have math teachers that are using math and addressing science problems. We have history and English teachers working together. So in the curriculum, it's no longer a four, the core four as much as a more holistic approach to addressing how we educate our children. And so we're looking for flexibility from the state in, because we, we have a way of measuring success at the end. Traditionally, there were times associated with you needed to spend this much time on this subject and this much time on that subject. And the reason they did that was because they didn't necessarily have the benchmarking that occurred elsewhere in our education system. And so I would encourage you to embrace that flexibility model. I know that it is, the way that we are looking at our whole legislative agenda is asking for the state to give Fairfax County more flexibility to deliver education in a manner that is more appropriate for this century.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I just want to give a specific shout-out to the advocates. My colleagues may not be aware, but with us tonight, Braddock resident Teresa Shipe and also Shelley Roach. You all originally came to my community office hours in Braddock, and as individual parents, you just said, "We're really concerned about our children." And you said, "What can we do about this?" And I advised you to get those power of the collective voices together. And the power of your collective voice has now created over 1,100 members on Facebook alone who have joined you in this chorus of saying, not just to the School Board, but now to our state, that this is important, that we need to think about when we commit to the whole child. We are talking about not just the instruction in the classroom, but their overall mental health and well-being. And so you are a wonderful example, as my colleague Ms. Hines pointed out, that you took an issue that many of us have been mindful of, but you really put in the hard work. And you've taken this issue, and now countywide, you have parents from all over Fairfax County schools paying attention to this. And it is an example of what makes Fairfax County such an incredible place to live because we have caring parents who take their time and they do their research. You may all not be aware, but when we arranged a meeting for the advocates to meet with Dr. Liz Payne, who works so closely on health and PE, and with our Student Health Advisory Committee to the School Board, known as Shack, again, you took the time in the meeting to lay out your concerns, and Dr. Payne then was able to listen and advise on what we've done to date. And so I really can't emphasize enough that you are an example of what it means to say "It takes a village to raise a child." And, Mr. McAveen, I appreciate, you know, being as our state liaison, helping to really bring this together so that we have important intentional language in our 2018 legislative package.
Thank you. And I also want to thank the parents who brought this issue. We did, we were at our state convention this last week, and we raised this as well with many other school boards throughout the state, and there is a lot of like-mindedness. Some years ago, when the state established minute requirements for some academic subjects, I don't think that they intended to squeeze out recess, but that was sort of an unintended consequence, I suspect. The importance of social-emotional learning for play, for recess, is so important for our young children. So I think going back to a situation that's a little more flexible provides our children with that kind of learning that is important when they play. So we will help this along and hope that we will, we'll have some success with our General Assembly. So we will vote on this amendment as presented by Mr. McAveen. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Now I will call on Ms. McLaughlin for another amendment.
Thank you. I move to replace the language in Section X1 through X5 of the 2018 State and Federal Legislative Program with the following. X1, the Fairfax County School Board supports significantly increased state resources devoted to programs and staffing, including school psychologists, school nurses, school social workers, to help school divisions serve the increasing school health and wellness needs of our student population, and to assist with responses to issues such as childhood obesity, child and adolescent sleep, student mental health, and suicide prevention. X2, the Fairfax County School Board supports maintaining locally-based authority and flexibility to determine the school- to determine the school health model that most appropriately meets a division's needs via local policies and staffing, including preservation of the role that local health departments play in the provision of school health services. Should the General Assembly choose to mandate particular health-related programs or staffing anyway, then adequate and appropriate state resources must be allocated before local divisions would be required to implement the changes. X3, the Fairfax County School Board supports increasing state reimbursement for both the school lunch and school breakfast programs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Evans. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your amendments?
Yes, just briefly. As was discussed at the prior work session, there was a desire on my part, along with many other colleagues, that we introduce school nurses into our legislative policy. It's very important that that language, again, be there from an intentionality standpoint. As some people may not be aware, the Virginia Nursing Association and National Best Practices recommend that for every 750 students, there should be a school nurse. Regrettably, the ratio right now in Fairfax County schools is there is one nurse per 3,000 students in our public schools. And with the ever-growing number of, of student health needs in our schools, it is vital that we really champion, both at the state level, and we will need to at the local level as well, with our board supervisors, the value and the importance of nurses. The other thing is that, as noted by our, our student representative, School Board Nehirika, that it was important that we really spotlight and highlight this board's commitment to mental health and suicide prevention. And I know this is a very important issue that, for all of us, but especially my colleague Ms. Evans, we wanted to make sure that we also had the intentionality of putting in child and adolescent sleep. So for my colleagues, the beauty of this amendment is the following: Not only do we spotlight and add in school nurses, childhood and adolescent sleep, student mental health and suicide prevention, but the other changes came from staff with the recommendation that we streamline the language and move it from five bullets down to three, but with equally powerful intentional language, the importance of this issue with student wellness. So I hope you will support the language that is presented in this amendment. And I do want to thank Mr. Michael Malloy and Marty Smith and all other staff who really helped to streamline the language but capture such important things for us tonight.
Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, just briefly. This, this board has had a deep and abiding interest in student mental health, both physical, mental, and emotional health. And it wasn't that long ago that we created, with the help of SHAC, a comprehensive wellness policy. And we've put ourselves on record as making that a very high priority. This has also been something that has been brought to us over the course of time by our students through the Student Advisory Council and through our student reps. I take note that Ms. Vataconda has been an ardent advocate for student mental health, and thank you for your voice in this, Ms. Vataconda, particularly the other day at our, at our work session and for raising this as an important area for our legislative package. I want to thank everyone who worked on this for making this comprehensive and for noting the need for more student, for school psychologists and school nurses, and yes, for, for sleep. We still need to be working with our students on getting adequate sleep and for working on nutrition and on more physical exercise, and I would put recess under, under that category as well. So thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for pulling this all together. It was a significant rewrite, and thank you, Mr. Malloy, for your work on this. So I do hope we can make some progress on this in the legislative, legislative session. So I wholeheartedly support this.
Thank you. Then I will call for the vote on this amendment. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous. The amendment passes. Thank you very much. Now, I will call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for several amendments.
Yes, thank you very much. I move to add the following language to the Federal Education Funding and Policy Section under Other Funding Issues between Items 16 and 17, and that remaining positions are renumbered accordingly. The FCSB supports a uniform set of rules and guidelines that would at least maintain current Medicaid funding and eligibility standards for our students, and that would continue to allow school divisions to claim administrative and transportation expenses associated with Medicaid-eligible services to students served under the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McElveen. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yes, thank you very much. I have added this amendment to our legislative package because the Medicaid funding is currently being looked at to be cut as a result of trying to fill other budgetary needs by the federal government. And this amendment is really an amendment that maintains status quo. It doesn't ask for additional funding, but it certainly ensures that we advocate with intentionality for the support of our students with disabilities to ensure that they have access to our programs, that we have the funds to cover the cost of those programs and transportation cost.
Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your second?
Nothing further.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin.
Just briefly, I very much want to extend my appreciation to Ms. Corbett Sanders for bringing forward this amendment. For many years, I remember talking with Ms. Corbett Sanders' predecessor, Dan Stork, about the importance of our federal government and, and getting the, the supports for our students here in Fairfax County, especially our military families who come through, and they count on Fairfax County schools to meet the needs of their children. And looking at the funding that's come from the federal government, it's, it's just shameful that we're not getting the funding we need so that we can meet the needs of our students. And so anything we can do as a, as a shared collective voice, as we talked about earlier tonight, this gives us that opportunity. And I actually look forward to utilizing this amendment, should it pass, so that we can be perhaps even more intentional in lobbying our federally-elected officials here in Fairfax County to, to really help bring voice to this, just like we've seen earlier tonight through our own community.
Okay, I'll call for the vote on this amendment. All those in favor? That vote is unanimous. The amendment passes. Thank you. I will call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for another amendment.
Yes, thank you. I move to add the following language to the Federal Education Funding and Policy Section under Funding Issues between Items 16 and 17, and that remaining positions are renumbered accordingly. The FCSB supports federal funding reauthorization of the Children's Health Insurance Program, CHIP, which helps serve children's healthcare needs in low-income households.
Second? Seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes. CHIP funding was not extended beyond September 30th. And this, when we have over, in some of our schools, 92% of our students on free and reduced meals, many of those students also are dependent on CHIP funding. And the fact that we don't have that continuation of programs and that parents are now worrying about how the healthcare needs of their children will be covered is unacceptable in my mind. And so I have asked my colleagues to share with me, or come together with me, to support the funding for this program. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly, again, I, I want to emphasize my appreciation to Ms. Corbett Sanders for bringing this part of the amendment to our legislative package. It's very alarming when you think about the, not only the increased rates of poverty and the needs, deep needs here in Fairfax County, but anyone, any parent living here across the nation, the cost of health, healthcare continues to skyrocket, and nothing can be more troubling for a parent than not to get the healthcare that their child needs. And so anything that we can do as a board, in the spirit of "It takes a village to raise a child," is to spotlight this and talk about what it means to live in a society that says, regardless of a child's income, that their health needs will be met, and that we can do it in a way that's effective. And so, again, I appreciate you bringing this forward as an amendment.
Okay, I'll call for a vote on this. Mr. McElveen, did you wish to speak to this?
Yeah, I would just note that, you know, we're now beyond the 50-day point of, of not funding this program. And while both the Senate and the House have, have reauthorized the bill, there is not, there, there is no proposal for funding it yet. So I think that the timeline is that it should reach the president's desk in December, but we still need to keep up our advocacy so that the funding is found and this solution is, is brought.
Thank you. I will call for the vote on this amendment. Elizabeth, thank you. Ms. Schultz?
Flipping my light. So, I'm sorry, this, this amendment brings forward a part of a federal funding of a healthcare program that we've never discussed. And while things like IDEA, we understand, what business the school board has in directing federal funds regarding healthcare, I don't know. And I don't know why that's, that you've created a confluence here that I don't think, that I think frankly mucks things up, because I don't know why it wasn't extended. I don't know how much we're talking about. This is why we have Obamacare, so why do we need an additional healthcare program? What are, what are these funds doing instead? I mean, we, we haven't had a discussion at all. I have no idea the magnitude of this, what, what the federal government had directed happened with those funds instead. And I think that this has no place in this particular, frankly, we'll get to this legislative agenda, but particularly here, you're talking about health insurance. You're not talking about education. And so this is, again, a going far afield and getting away from, you know, the business of the board as related to this. We can advocate for everything. We wish we had money for, I mean, you know, let's just make sure the federal government pays for everybody for everything at whose expense? Who's paying the bill and for what and related to what and instead of what? And this is not a conversation we've had. I don't understand where this relates. And so I wish that this was not involved in this particular language.
I have Mr. McElveen and then Ms. Hines to explain CHIP.
Just to respond to that point, I, I think this is critical because it relates to the health of nine million kids, and that is the business of this board, which is the, you know, we, we have student achievement goals. It's not just about academics. It's about life skills. It's about contributions to the community. None of those are possible, our kids cannot fulfill any of those without their health. It's something that we've talked about on the issue of school food. If we don't, if kids come to school hungry, they can't learn. If kids come to school without healthcare, they can't learn.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, I think this is important. We know that, you know, it's a reality that we are partners with our, the parents of our kids, the families of our kids, and that's especially true for families in need. They need our partnership even more, and we need their partnership even more. So we're in this together when it comes to the whole child. And just, you know, it's my understanding that if a family is making $16,000 or less, they're eligible for Medicaid. But the CHIP covers that gap between eligibility for Medicaid and being able to afford anything. And, you know, the, the healthcare exchanges, I think we all know that those are not always cheap, right? And if you're making 16, your family's making $16,100 a year, you're not going to be able to go on to an exchange and get health insurance for your family. That's why CHIP is there. You know, it was created because it's an important stopgap for families and kids. And how can we, how can we not fight for health insurance for our neediest kids and their families? To me, this is a no-brainer.
Okay, I will call for the vote on this amendment. All those in favor? It is Evans, McLaughlin, Palchak, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Darnik, Darnik Kofax is way from the table, Keys Gamara. Those opposed? Abstention? Ms. Schultz, that motion passes. We are now back to the main motion as amended. I'm not going to read all the amendments, but all the amendments did pass, so we are back to the main motion. It is our legislative package as amended this evening. I don't believe we need a second because it is already on the table. It has already been seconded. Therefore, I will call for the vote on the legislative package as... Ms. Schultz, I'm sorry.
So, so I guess, when you go, Mr. Malloy, to Richmond, and you hand somebody a legislative package, I haven't counted the bullets this year. That's been my hobby in years past, to see how large our legislative package is. And you hand it to a legislator, and they say, "Well, what does Fairfax County want?" What are you going to tell them? What's your elevator speech in 60 seconds?
If you look, I'm looking for the page for you. The board has a, a one-page set of priority.
You don't need, you don't need a page. Just, what's your 60-second elevator speech when you hand a legislative package from the Fairfax County School?
The shorthand is additional funding for, for Fairfax County and additional flexibility for Fairfax County priorities.
So I don't know what those priorities are, because then you have to go to the legislative package. So this is a perennial speech. You know, I, I still volunteer to go with my 11 colleagues and Dr. Braybrand and anybody else. I think we should get in a school bus. I think we should go to Richmond, and I think we should advocate for the one, two, or on the outside, three things that will most significantly make a difference for 189,123, or whatever it is today, schoolchildren in Fairfax County. And we get better. We get better every year with the legislative package, but we're not there. What, if, if I ran into a legislator, I would tell them, "What's the one thing or two things that will profoundly make a difference that if you guys passed, if we had a legislative, if we had a legislative victory to notch our belt, what would it be?" And everybody says, "Well, we couldn't possibly change the LCI." But you hear everybody talking about the LCI. Why not? Why, I could, I could get our legislative package next year down to three letters, LCI. And let's go and have a conversation with every single legislator who represents Fairfax County. And, you know, I heard a reference to November's elections, and maybe we'll have more education. Great! If we're going to have more education policy as a result of November's elections, then we should get everything we want. But we won't, because the question is, what is it we need the most? And when we had the Joint Board of Supervisors discussion, and I illuminated the fact that Fairfax County has, I think, 14, I don't even have the numbers in front of me, but 14.6% of the Commonwealth of Virginia students, but 35.5% of the ESAL students. That is a disproportionate burden that we're bearing in Fairfax County. And by the way, special education, my special education advocates, it was just 15.97%, I think it was, so just under 16%. And we only have about 10.5% of the free and reduced meal students in all of the Commonwealth of Virginia. So we're, we're underwater on free and reduced. We're just above parity on special education, but we're grossly disproportionately sharing the burden of providing for very needy services. And off the top of my head, I recall that in ESAL education for a student where we get no waivers from the state for graduation requirements, we have to graduate them on time or we get pinged. Those are the things that we can talk about. You guys have got to, in Richmond, when we get 13 cents on a dollar for every dollar we send, we're funding the rest of the Commonwealth of Virginia, but we have disproportionate burdens that we should be highlighting that take from some and give to others. We're having to provide for that, and we're not able to do other things, preschool, whatever it is, is your passion, recess, special education, whatever it is. And if we don't adequately describe exactly what we want them to do, exactly the legislation, say, "Don't focus..." say, don't focus on anything else. You know, in fact, repeal laws. Do less governing. Do less mandating. Do less overreaching. But these things can make a difference in the lives of kids, can make a difference in the lives of 40,000 employees, you know, whether it's related to retirement benefits, whatever it is. But we love, you know, advocating on lots of different issues. And when you advocate on everything, I think you advocate on nothing because it's hard to separate our voice from all the different issues. And that's the fun of advocating. It's like, well, we have to advocate for all children. No. You know what? We have to get something done legislative. Something has to change in order to change the reality. And the reality is, is that we're, what are we, Dr. Braybrand, 48th or 43rd in the states in education funding? So we're not getting the funding from the state and we're not getting the particular funding that we particularly need in Fairfax County to address particular needs that are disparate than the other 137 school districts. And so, you know, this type of legislative agenda is, you know, it's better than it was when I first got on the board, but it's still largely superfluous to actually getting changes that are functional changes out of Richmond, out of our legislators, that change on the ground what we're doing in terms of money or policy. So, I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, I don't think the lack of changes in Richmond has been due to a lack of focus on our part. I mean, I can tell you, I've taken those trips, those lobbying trips down to Richmond and talked to my legislators here locally. And, I mean, it's absolutely true. I don't, I take that legislative packet, but they don't want to talk about all of it. That makes perfect sense. So I talk about the things that are most pressing, most important. And so, I don't, I don't think there's a problem with having a legislative packet that encompasses a lot of the good ideas and the wants and needs of people in this community in there somewhere. Because with the hundreds of bills that come up every year, part of your job down there, Michael, Mr. Malloy, is to respond, right? Because things will come up, we don't know where they're going to come from. Somebody in some corner of the state will have a great idea and everybody will jump on board and they think it's a great idea. And you need to have something in our legislative packet to go with in the spur of the moment. You know, you can't, you are not able, because of the way things move so quickly down there, you are not able to come back to us and ask for guidance. So I think that's one reason it's really important that our legislative packet be somewhat exhaustive to anticipate all the things that might happen. But when it comes to what we actually advocate, here's what I recommend to people. You know, I mean, do what I do. We have a whole, a new, a whole new slate of legislators going down there to Richmond this year, thanks to the voters. Maybe we'll have some changes down there. Maybe Virginia will get back to who we traditionally for centuries have been, and that is a champion of excellent public education. And we'll stop defunding public schools in this Commonwealth. Let's hope so. But that's not going to happen unless we get down there and hold those new people accountable. So, please, look at the legislative packet. It's excellent. It's got something in there for everybody, you know? Find your passion. Find the thing that you care most about and take that with you down to Richmond. Hold your legislators accountable for it. You know, I for one, I'm going to keep talking about flexibility and funding because as a board, that is really what our message has to be. We have to be consistent. But also, to give Mr. Malloy the tools and the ammunition that he needs to fight for all those other things that our community cares about. So, I'll be supporting this.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you. And Ms. Hines said it very well, so I won't repeat everything she did say, but I agree that we need a thorough and an extensive legislative package to give Mr. Malloy and others going down there the tools that we need to say, what is our position on each of these issues? Last year, we had a very extensive advocacy with the help of our county, with other counties around the state, to try to get a delay of the VRS increase, the $25 million that we had to pay. And we did put the full court press on that. It didn't work, even though we had a lot of support. Sometimes what we can make the most inroads are, are on individual items. If we had to choose two or three, would recess be the first one? I don't know. I mean, I, we have to deal with the big money issues. We know that, but recess is important. We don't, we shouldn't have to choose just one or, one or two things. We need to be able to send our people down there. And when we go down there ourselves, we need to know what this board stands for and what we're pushing for. So, I'm glad this is as extensive as it is. I'm glad that we have focused it and highlighted certain things because, you know, that tells people down there, you know, what we consider the most important. But I value the extensive nature of this and I do support it.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I just want to echo that when you look at, I believe it's page four of the legislative package, the first two items, when it talks about providing adequate state support for public education as well as the preserving of this local school board's authority and flexibility, it's so important that we talk about being here in the most populated jurisdiction in the Commonwealth, the cost to compete, the local salary costs that are then impacted by that, the resources that local school divisions will need when, again, you have pockets of poverty that oftentimes it's masked here in Fairfax County. And people are genuinely surprised when we help educate them that we have some schools where it's a 75% to 90% poverty rate. Their eyes get wide-eyed and they just are shocked. It's, it's not a reality that a lot of people realize about one of the wealthiest counties in the United States, but it's very real. And it's important that when Michael Malloy goes down and speaks to the state delegates, it's not just those from the Northern Virginia delegation. He's, he's trying to talk to legislators throughout the Commonwealth and help them understand the unique challenges that we have here in Fairfax County. And so, the ability to talk about how we can meet the needs of all of our students as well as to have competitive salary for our employees, those are all so crucial. And, and yet, some of our successes, I was so thrilled to hear today at the superintendent's State of the Schools luncheon, that the Virginia Secretary of Education noted that through the advocacy of Fairfax County schools and other jurisdictions, that we eliminated five SOWs. I mean, when you can eliminate five exams on kids, that's legislative success. That's in here now. It's something we continue to do. But rather than just rail about it from the dais and in our communities, we actually lobbied for it and we've been able to see progress. And so, you know, I, I know that with 12 of us here, we all have certain things we wish the package would reflect. But in the end, as we've talked about it, if it's a comprehensive collection of where we are as a system as a whole, then that does allow the legislators to at least identify these key areas. And then they can come and talk to us and say, how would I drill down? And I will just tell you all, I'm going to be absolutely advocating on issues like the school nurses. We, we need to draw statewide attention to this issue. But I also understood the importance of streamlined language in the package. And so, it's our job as the elected officials to now put the meat on the bones with what's here in the package. And I look forward to supporting it this year.
Ms. Palchek?
Yes, thank you. I was planning on speaking, but I do want to add a few things to what some of my colleagues have shared. I think it's really important to understand, as we've spoken and other topics, what this is and what this is not. This is a program, a comprehensive program, so that Michael Malloy and the county's representatives down in Richmond in a very fast-paced 60-day session that encompasses a whole year's work in 60 days, where there are at least a handful of simultaneous subcommittee meetings at once. And I saw this firsthand last year, when I popped into one subcommittee meeting that was looking at flexibility for local funding and trying to stop it, how quickly things happen in Richmond. And yes, I think as Ms. McLaughlin said, we've stated very clearly that our priority positions are around funding for education. It could be, part of it is the LCI. Part of it is ensuring that ELL students and students in high poverty areas in schools are getting the funding they need. So it's not a one silver bullet and one shot cures all. It's let's figure out how many ways we can do that. So I just think it's critical to understand that just because we are not saying we have two priorities, does that mean that we can't hop on a bus and go down to Richmond and advocate on the things that we deem to be priorities? There is nothing stopping us. There's nothing stopping our advocates from doing that. And actually, this does not do that. That is completely separate. This is just stating, so when Michael is down there, Mr. Malloy, and something comes up last minute, he has in his program the ability to make decisions representing the school board. And I think that is critical to be clear about what that is and we can always be improving the language. But priority positions and advocacy are not replaced by legislative programs. So I too will be supporting this, I think especially in a Dillon Law state where we do not have local authority unless specifically given to us by the Commonwealth. We have to be vigilant in ensuring that we have flexibility to meet the needs of our students and to be able to ensure adequate funding and what our kids and community need. So I too will be supporting this legislative program.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I think we would be remiss tonight in taking a vote on this until we also talked about the invaluable role that Fairfax County's legislative program plays in the legislative, legislative programs across the state. Because we are such a large school system and a very complex school system with the socioeconomic makeup that we have and the diversity in our system, we have a comprehensive legislative program. And, you know, yes, we also have our elevator speech. I would say Fairfax focuses on flexibility and funding. And because that flexibility and funding actually underlies all the other piece parts of our legislative program, we need to recognize that. But we also need to recognize that the rest of the state looks to what the priorities are in Fairfax County and learns from our priorities and oftentimes joins us in advocating for those priorities. So it really is an expectation that Fairfax will lead on the legislative agenda. And it's very clear when we go to places like VSBA and when we go down on lobbying days and people are saying, well, where's Fairfax on this? There's also another aspect which is really important, and it was briefly addressed by Mrs. Darrenak Kofax when she seconded the package. And that was that there is going to be a different makeup in Richmond this year. And as a result of 15 new members of the House of Delegates, there is a role in educating those new members on what the priorities are for Fairfax County. We could easily just send them a one-liner, Fairfax focuses on flexibility and funding, but I think they would want to have a little bit more detail. And so, I am very happy to support this package and to also encourage the new members of the House of Delegates, as well as my colleagues on other school boards around the state, to look at our priorities. I do know that as a result of some of the conversations that we had at VSBA, that a number of other boards are looking at including specific language on recess. They're looking for what we've put in our package and we will be sending it to them. And so, it's, I'm happy to support this.
I have Mrs. Schultz and then Dr. Braybrand. Mrs. Schultz?
So just, I want to make sure that we have context because there were references made to pockets of poverty. And there is no doubt that there's been a fundamental shift in Fairfax County and certain areas of the county and certain schools. But the takeaway that I had when I, when we were at the Board of Supervisors joint meeting was, and I'm recalling off the top of my head, I believe it was about 488,000 students in the Commonwealth of Virginia are in the, in the needy population. And we're only 10% of that, even though we're 14.6% of the population. So, we talk about pockets of poverty and we sometimes forget that the whole of the rest of Virginia has whole counties that are at poverty levels. And so, I want us to be cautious when we talk about the fact that our children have, you know, significant needs in pockets, that that message does not carry when, when our legislators have to go to Richmond and compete against entire counties living at that level. And so, there is the context. And there's no reason not to have positions on things, but perennially, the issue is, what are the one or two things, or potentially three, that is going to be our focus to get a legislative win? And that's what we don't do. I'm not saying we shouldn't have legislative positions. That's great. You can have positions on anything so that Mr. Malloy can have a legislative emergency position statement from us. That's not the reality of why you pass a legislative agenda. The point of a legislative agenda is, what do, what do we need to get done? What do we, what do we need to make a substantive change in Fairfax County? Clearly, not only the largest in the Commonwealth of Virginia, but one of the largest in the nation. And if you get that change here, that's the change that flows, not will some other school district somewhere, you know, have their school board look at our legislative agenda and because we're the gorilla in, in the Commonwealth of Virginia in terms of school districts, that they'll follow along and do the Pied Piper? That's not why you do, you don't say, well, you know, we're so strong that everybody should just follow our legislative agenda. What you should say is, if there's a fundamental thing like, you know, research on whether start times, recess, whatever, real food for kids, that if you want to change, if you want to have a farm-to-table, you know, if you want to talk about the nutritional value instead of the healthcare, the federal healthcare of programs that are funded or not funded, you know, let's talk about agribusiness and agritourism and, and farming jobs in the Commonwealth of Virginia that could feed kids and have that be a legislative win for everyone in the Commonwealth of Virginia because you create jobs in one area and you feed kids all over. And that's, that's the difference between having a strategic focus in a legislative agenda that says, let's go get this one thing done. Let's, let's have a unanimity and a voice rather than, you know, a package that, you know, in the event of a legislative emergency, Mr. Malloy, please refer to bullet 482.03.
Right. I will call for a vote on the legislative package as amended. All those in favor? Ms. Evans, McLaughlin, Palchek, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Darrenak Kofax, Keys-Gamaro. Those opposed? Abstention? Ms. Schultz? I would like to thank again, Mr. Malloy, for helping us. And I know that many school divisions throughout the Commonwealth depend on your work and many of our legislators, that they will come to you and say, well, what will the impact be on schools and education, not only in Fairfax County, but for the Commonwealth? So thank you very much. Thank you for helping us find the right words and language. And I know Mr. Smith also helped with that. So, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda was a consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. Item 6.01, approve the minutes of the November 9, 2017 meeting. 6.02, that the school board award a contract for the Herndon High School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Grunley Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $83,995,000. And authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent facilities and transportation services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Thank you. Wonderful future for, for Herndon High School. Six points, one of my schools. 6.03, adopt the resolution approving the 2018 sale of school bonds. And B, authorize the chairman or the vice chairman with the advice of legal counsel for the school division to negotiate, execute, and administer the school board tax certificate and all of the documents as are deemed appropriate and advisable, and to do all things necessary to complete the transaction contemplated by the resolution as detailed in the agenda item. 6.04, confirm the 6.04, confirm the separations for the period beginning October 1, 2017 and ending October 31, 2017. Appoint one citizen member recommended by the audit committee. 6.06, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will be, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, authorize staff to negotiate professional services contracts with selected firms for architectural design of capital construction projects. And authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer contracts on behalf of the school board. 7.02, award a contract for the Annandale High School roof replacement project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.03, award a contract for the Marshall High School modular replacement project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the Excuse me. Approve the, I'm going to ask you to repeat the rest. Approve the grant of easements to the county and authorize the chairman or vice chairman in consultation with legal counsel for the school division to take all actions necessary and appropriate to negotiate, execute, deliver, and administrate, administer deeds of easement and any related documentation. 7.05, approve the titles listed for kindergarten through grade 12 mathematics as recommended by the Mathematics Basel Instructional Materials Adoption Committee and the Selection Advisory Committee. 7.06, authorize the division superintendent and the assistant superintendent, Department of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom may act without the other, to take all actions necessary and appropriate in consultation with legal counsel for the school division to pursue approval of proffered condition amendment applications for the combined McNair Elementary School site, including negotiating, signing, and submitting the final proffer statement and any other documents on behalf of the school board. Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. The next item is Superintendent Matters. Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. I want to thank everyone from the community, including the school board who was able to come out to our first annual superintendent's luncheon today. Many of you were there. We had over 300 guests in attendance, and the proceeds are going to the Fairfax Education Foundation. We also had the opportunity to honor partnership winners for the year. Our business partner for this year, our winner, was the Navy Federal Credit Union. Our community partner for the year was Food for Others. And our workforce development partner for the year was the Metropolitan Washington Airports Authority. I want to congratulate all of them and all of our business partnerships in our school system that really help make our school system even better. We were also honored to have First Lady Dorothy McAuliffe, and she was named as our first-ever annual champion of the year for her work in combating children's hunger and bringing the breakfast to the classroom initiative to Fairfax County Public Schools. I want you to know that I also had a chance to go on Veterans Day to visit our schools on November 10, when we commemorated Veterans Day. It wasn't Veterans Day, but we were commemorating it on that day. Our schools invited the military personnel and veterans into their schools to share stories and celebrations. It's a federal holiday, and it's a great opportunity for over 11,000 of our military-connected children to have their parents come into the school for Veterans Day. I saw one military dad tweet, "If you want to see how Veterans Day should be done, check out FCPS News. That's why I love my hometown." I had a chance to visit Claremont that morning, Twain, Rose Hill, and Lane. Wonderful, wonderful things going on to celebrate our veterans. That, by the way, was another opportunity to be in schools, and I am now up to 54 schools visited in my time back in Fairfax. It's so great to connect. I have several more to go, but I'm enjoying those visits. What I'm also enjoying is two community, additional community conversations we've had in the last two weeks. One at Hayfield with 112 folks in attendance, and one at Irving with 115 in attendance. I want to thank everyone for coming out to share their ideas with me. Our principals have also been coming out to these community conversations, and I particularly appreciated the chance to have parents get to connect directly with principals and regional staff. Sometimes really, some of the issues are really just about bringing everybody face-to-face. And we're, in our schools, we're talking about when our kids are in conflict, to use restorative justice as a method to bring people together. In a sense, we need to have our restorative, sometimes restorative, community conversations to bring people together that maybe haven't been together before face-to-face. And I want to thank school board members who've also attended the sessions. I really have appreciated that. While we're talking about things that I appreciate, you know, at the beginning of the year, I drew cats. Cat number one was my first attempt at drawing a cat. I got a little help from an art teacher, had cat number two, and then I showed all of Fairfax County administrators Leonardo da Vinci's, cat number three. And I did tell you all that Fairfax County wants to be cat three in everything, but is not always. I want you to know from someone who grew up in this county professionally and left and has come back, that in turn, terms of our legislative package and in terms of our legislative expertise, Michael Malloy is a cat three employee for Fairfax County Public Schools. He is the E.F. Hudden in the General Assembly for Education Issues. When he speaks, legislators listen. And the truth is, I went to a school district that when I got there, the budget cuts of 2009 eliminated lobbyists for our schools. Many, many regions of Virginia now have no one, no one in Richmond to represent them. And they are hopeful and glad that Fairfax County continues to carry the torch for public education in Virginia. I do believe the comprehensive plan, look, I do believe in priorities because we're working on prioritizing the strategic plan, and we'll be doing that, I know, in another week. And it's important to have priorities. I can tell you, my number one priority is to fund Virginia public schools back to the level of 2009. We are still, on an inflation-adjusted basis, are funding our schools less than over eight years ago due to the Great Recession. We've still not come out of it, and we are crowding our general fund. Percentage of our general fund expenditures going to education continues to decline in Virginia. It needs to be increased. Finally, I just want to say to all of you, I hope you have a happy Thanksgiving. It's a short week this week. I have my family in town, my mom and my mother and father-in-law, and it's great to have them to my home for the first time. It's great to be back home in Fairfax County Public Schools. And I really love Thanksgiving as a holiday. It is a truly American holiday, and I am thankful to be back and to be working again in the Fairfax family and with this board. And I hope you all get some time with your families for your public service this weekend and let them know that you appreciate what they do, and I hope they'll let you know how much they appreciate what you do on behalf of Fairfax County. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. And I would like to note that you got a standing ovation at our luncheon this afternoon. It was a great speech. Thank you. Now I will call on Ms. McLaughlin for a Public Engagement Committee report.
Just briefly, I do want to let my colleagues know that the Public Engagement Committee met on Monday before all-day work session. We had a wonderful summary from Assistant Superintendent Teresa Johnson, who talked about the great success of the Mental Health and Wellness Conference. The turnout was outstanding. There was over 800 registered participants, up from 400 in previous years. So we're very excited. There were over 50 sessions that were offered. So there was certainly tremendous turnout and interest in the community on this conference, and very pleased and appreciative of both Teresa Johnson and her entire team, who helped put on such a great conference, to Dr. Braybrand, who participated as one of our key speakers. I think it was a fantastic way to introduce you to our larger community and to help really allow you to speak to an issue that I know you care deeply about as well for our students. And I also, we then talked about basically some of the ways in which the school board will want to look at our citizen participation process. And so that is being reviewed very carefully by PEC. So to my other colleagues, I want you to know we're doing a lot of the heavy lifting right now to look at ways that we can optimize opportunities for our community and, including our employees, who really want to ensure that they have access and opportunity to speak to the board. And I want to express my appreciation to our clerk, Eileen Mulberg, who's really helping us also look at the best way to perhaps make some changes. So we will be bringing that to you, but I think it's going to take another meeting or two to flesh that out. And then we did have some conversation about the website as a continuation of a prior meeting where I was traveling and couldn't attend. And one of the key things that we talked about from the website is restoring something that we had on the prior website, which is sort of the topics of interest, you know, some of the key issues. For example, like the calendar was a very key interest for our community and being able to spotlight that on the homepage. The Jeb Stuart implementation process, being able to make sure that we've got some of those kind of more current issues for people can easily find those things. And, and then I appreciated that there was also discussion on how we could better solicit community input and having an option on the homepage again where people really feel like they can easily identify, how do I bring forward just an issue of concern? So otherwise, I appreciate the time and attention that my colleagues are giving to this. I do think that our Public Engagement Committee really is a way that we can help strengthen the board's connection to the community.
Board Matters, I'll begin with Ms. Evans.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Glen Forest Elementary School for inviting me to a wonderful cherry blossom ceremony today. Mr. Canoege, who is Senior Vice President of A&amp;A and representatives from the National Cherry Blossom Festival, were there to celebrate the planting of several cherry blossoms. Mr. Canoege is a graduate of Glen Forest Elementary School. So he came back nearly 50 years after he had been there, remembering fondly his time at Glen Forest Elementary and giving back in this way. And I can't wait till spring to see the cherry blossoms. And I want to thank Mr. Moon and Mr. McElveen for joining me there for this ceremony. And other than that, I just want to say I hope everyone has a happy, healthy, and restful Thanksgiving weekend.
Ms. McLaughlin?
In addition to really reinforcing the message from Dr. Braybrand, I do want to say to our superintendent and the leadership team, as well as to my colleagues, I am very thankful to work alongside of you and to live in a county that so deeply values public education and really allows us to try and do our very best every day to improve the lives of children. And I do want to say, for those of you who were unable to join us at VSBA, I thought it was one of the best I've attended in many years. The sessions were very relevant, and I hope to find some time, maybe over the Thanksgiving break, to just type up some quick summary notes of the key sessions I enjoyed. But really felt that there were things that we can bring back and hopefully share with one another and improve the work that we do. And finally, I wanted to also express my appreciation to one of my elementary schools, Tara Center, where they had hosted the Veterans Day celebration. And Dr. Braybrand, it was really amazing to see how the principal, her administrative team, and the music teachers, and the second-grade choral group sang the most beautiful songs. And they held a breakfast that was sponsored by the PTA, and it was absolutely filled capacity in the cafeteria with all the parents who came out in honor of such an important remembrance of what it means for all of our veterans who've fought and died for the freedom. But it was beautiful. And I will say to my colleagues that some of the input I got from some of the military families was, on the one hand, they love being able to come to these celebrations, and because we are in school, then it has allowed them to be there. However, they also said that at minimum, they'd like for us to consider that maybe that's one of the days where we did an early release, so that they kind of have the best of both worlds. They get to come, visit their children's school, tour the school, and visit in the classroom, but then that they could also still have part of the important holiday and time with their children and families. So mostly, they all understood that it's, there's a sort of advantages both ways of holding those celebrations on Veterans Day and then maybe doing it on a day that's nearby. But anyway, with that, happy holidays and safe travels to any and all who are traveling.
Ms. Palchek?
Yes, Ms. McLaughlin, I'm glad you got that feedback from them. As we mentioned at the work session, I hope that that will come forward for the next calendar. Being in school full-time, I get less opportunity to go and visit, but I did have a chance to come back. I love being at Luther Jackson during the day when there are kids here and to see them roaming the halls and studying hard and reading in the hallway. So I want to thank Principal Lehman, who always takes me on a great tour and gives me a couple hours of his time and ability to even sit in on a Spanish class. So I appreciate that. I also want to thank the several faith leaders, and I want to thank Mr. Moon and Ms. McLaughlin, who have helped me put together a group to start working with our community and the, and the faith leaders in Fairfax County to start to see how together we can tackle student wellness and mental health issues. So I think it's, started some good conversations and hope they continue to grow. And beyond that, it's been a hectic, stressful, and anxious time for many of us, and I do hope that everyone gets a chance to rest, relax, and be with family on this Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen?
So I'm happy to announce that December 5 is not only our legislative reception, but it's also the day we will be kicking off our Student Leadership Development Program. I'm happy to report that every single magisterial district, including the Lee District, had had someone apply to the program. So we will be moving forward with that and look forward to treating a new set of students to the work of the board over the coming year. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank the USO and the Military Families Organization for the wonderful event that I was able to attend with Mr. McElveen at South County High School, as well as the Veterans Association supporting, Veterans and PTA associations supporting Holland Meadows Elementary School, where they did a recitation of Old Glory. It was truly moving. And finally, for the Travis Mannion Foundation's support for a day of service at West Potomac High School. Those were wonderful ways of celebrating our Veterans Day. I also want to just thank my colleagues for the amount of time that they spent at the VSBA this past week. I agree with Ms. McLaughlin that it was one of the more fruitful conferences that I've attended with special breakout sections on poverty and the impact of poverty in our schools, as well as changes in school law and a number of other important sessions. So it was very useful and helpful. Finally, I want to wish everybody a very happy and celebratory Thanksgiving. It's one of my favorite holidays here in the United States because it's an opportunity for everybody to just stop, reflect on how lucky we are, to be thankful, but also to spend time with family and friends and to take time to also support those in our community that... that may not have as much. So, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam. Appreciate you. I was happy to join Ms. Evans and my other, a large board member, Mr. McElveen, at Glen Forest Elementary School here today. And when Mr. Canougy was there, you know, he shared with us that he had spent two years there, from sixty-nine to seventy-one. And since then, obviously, a lot has changed at the school, that back then, he was, he said that he was only one of two students who, for whom English was a second language. But now, he has a large, one of the largest, you know, eastern population is at that school. But another change that, to my gray screen, has happened at this school was, is that close to fifty percent of the students at Glen Forest are being educated in learning colleges. We've got to do something about that, Superintendent. Thank you.
Ms. Heinz.
I will pass tonight.
Ms. Schultz.
Yes, first of all, I want to thank Irving Middle School, all the administrators in Region Four who came out for Dr. Braybrand's listening tour. That was phenomenal. Filled up the auditorium there. I'm looking forward to Tuesday, the Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, where we're going to invite you back to my region, Chantilly High School, for Region Five, listening tour. That will be terrific. I do want to thank Sangster Elementary for another incredible Veterans Day opportunity. I do want to share that I had a wonderful discussion with our colleagues from the Prince William County School Board while we were at the V SBA conference, and they shared with me that they've found a way to recognize Veterans Day on their calendar. So, I've made sure to share their calendar with you, Dr. Ramey, as an example of how we could lead, since we're interested in leading, and that would be a good thing to lead on, being the fact that we have the highest concentration of veterans of any county in the United States of America. I do look forward to, in addition, I'm going to have a busy week the week after Thanksgiving. Tuesday, I'll be with Dr. Braybrand at Chantilly High School for Region Five, and on Wednesday and Thursday, while I usually do three, I'm not able to fit in three before with all of our other meeting obligations. I'll have two citizen town halls. The first will be at Fairview Elementary. I will be meeting Pryor at Oakview with the Boy Scouts, then I'll dash over to Fairview at seven o'clock for a citizen town hall from seven to eight-thirty. And then, on Thursday, I'll go to the other end of the county, at the other end of my district, to Orange Hunt Elementary for another citizen town hall from seven to eight. So, that's open to all residents. You don't have to have parents in that school. They're just geographically located for convenience of the constituents in the Springfield District. I do thank all of the students who applied. I think I may have had another record-setting number of kids from the Springfield District apply to be in our student leadership cohort. A lot, for the first time I noticed, were sophomores. So, if you didn't get picked, please reapply next year. You have your sophomore and junior year to apply. It's a very difficult decision. Everybody is, you know, I'd like to pick everybody, but I do have a student coming this time from Lake Braddock. I do tend to go around my district. So, I appreciate all of you who did that and for all the principals and guidance counselors who encourage their students to participate in even the application process, the fact that those come to us and that we do take the time to read through those, even if you weren't selected. It's a wonderful process just to begin the applications. So, thank you, and everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Ms. Darna Kofax.
Yes, I would like to thank the parents of Claremont Elementary School for organizing an amazing Veterans Day celebration. It was truly inspirational. I also attended the West Potomac Day of In-Service Training and with the Travis Mannion Foundation, and that was amazing, too, to see all the students there engaged in their community service learning projects and hand-in-hand working with veterans, as well as members of the Fairfax County Police Department and the Fairfax County Firefighters. So, that was inspirational. I want to thank the Washington Redskins Charitable Foundation for all the work you do with our kids in Region Three, many reading programs, many times in the classroom, and some of our children had the opportunity to attend a Redskins game last weekend, and that was, that was a wonderful experience for them. It was very exciting. Thank you also to the parents who attended my community coffee last week. I really appreciated you coming out and sharing your concerns and compliments with me. Also enjoyed with my colleagues, I attended the V SBA, Virginia School Boards Association Conference, at the end of last week. I found, I too, found it very inspirational. And today, attending the State of the Schools conversation with Dr. Braybrand, put on by our foundation and other community leaders, and it was wonderful. I sat at a table with one of the community champions that won. And many of these groups are primarily volunteer organizations with small staffs, and it is really because of groups like these that organize backpack drives, that give food over weekends and organize food over weekends to families that may not have food in their homes if they're not provided via our school system. It is an amazing group of volunteers and organizations that we have, and I was privileged to meet several of you today. So, thank you so much, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Ms. Kuzkamara.
I'd like to thank the folks at Flynn Hill Elementary. I have attended their Veterans Day program, and that was actually quite a pleasure, since my children attended that school. I also want to announce that my first newsletter, which I find very exciting, will come out this week, and my first set of office hours will be this Friday at the Oakton Library. So, we are moving right along, and I'm just going to cut it short. I did go to the luncheon today. I want to thank Kevin Reynolds. He's a part of that foundation, but I just mostly want to say happy Thanksgiving and good night.
Thank you. I want to thank Franklin Sherman Elementary School for inviting me to their wonderful Veterans Day ceremony. It's always very moving. And I want to thank the Education Foundation for the superintendent's luncheon that they sponsored today, and particularly recognize Elizabeth Murphy, who is the CEO of our Education Foundation, and all of those who've contributed to our foundation. Gives us additional funding to help many worthy programs within our schools. And again, thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for your inspiring speech. We appreciated that. It was very good. Now, the school board, let's go back into closed meeting. Our work isn't done. The school board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting. Two, one, discuss and consider disciplinary matters concerning two students pursuant to section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A two of the Code of Virginia. Two, consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically personnel matters, Title Nine, the legality of certain fees, and S.C. versus School Board case, all pursuant to sections two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A seven and A eight of the Code of Virginia. And three, discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, discipline, or resignation of a specific employee pursuant to section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one A one of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Corbett Sanders, second by Ms. Palchak. All those in favor? All those in favor? All those in favor? Thank you. Motion is unanimous. The school board is now in closed session. Thank you.